All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome everyone to the March 17th meeting of the Port Angeles City Council and Happy St. Patrick's Day. We are live streaming this evening's meeting. The camera for the live stream is straight ahead of me on the ledge there. So we do need to do a couple of housekeeping things. If you have your phones out, please make sure they're on airplane mode so that there's no interference. They should be on airplane mode anyway, but we can have them out for time, but we don't want interference from them. And I think that's all for now, so let's go ahead and get started. Mayor Dexter?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Carr?
Here.
Councilmember French?
Here.
Councilmember McCon?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Present.
Councilmember Schwamen Warren?
Here.
Councilmember Suss?
Here.
Senator West?
Present.
Attorney Blor?
Here.
All right, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I think most of council is remembering this, but we get a lot of feedback from the microphone, so we'll try to do one at a time. Sorry, my chair is stuck. It's closed. All right, so at this point, we'll go on to, you will see on the amended agenda, a number of items have been removed to be postponed for a future date. So we will start with public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment? Okay, come on down. We're going to do the same thing, it'll just be awkward because you're standing behind me. So name and whether you live in the city, and you have three minutes, please. Thank you.
Mayor Smith, do I live in the city? So, a large number of Port Angeles households are trapped in the current unexpected crisis. They work minimum wage, hourly jobs in non-essential service industries. These people will not be paid for the rest of March and perhaps April. As many as 40% of our families are one paycheck away from financial disaster, bankruptcy and homelessness. The average income is $27,000 per year. The average utility costs are roughly 15% of their take-home pay. It could mean the difference between feeding their families or paying rent. That's 40% of their monthly outgo. The people of Port Angeles are not rich. They cannot afford this disruption to their lifetime, their life incomes. The city of Port Angeles has a $120 million annual budget. It's in a much better position to absorb a financial hit. The city could reduce non-essential workers, lower hours, or make other sacrifices to be compassionate in the community in this unusual crisis. Other cities and states and businesses are showing heart by suspending disconnections, waiving any late fees, or offering free services for customers for their financial relief. Last year, you passed Compassion Chart, where you declared a shared commitment to embrace compassion as a value that we will intentionally build into the culture of our community. We resolved to embrace compassion as a key value and support the exploration and development of policies and activities that integrate compassion into the daily life of our community. It's time to give, to live up to this promise. If more families become homeless, if more businesses fail, we will all be paying for this for the long term. It's better for Port Angeles to invest now than suffer the consequences. I ask that you waive the March Utility Bill, stop disconnections, waive any disconnect fees, and consider doing the same thing for April. Be compassionate.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council? All right, we did ask because we were trying to reduce the number of people for our meeting and did not want to, not allow anyone else to participate. We did ask for people to give written public comment, and I do have two public comments that I want to read, and I will read them exactly as they are written in the words of the people who submitted them. The first is, "City of Port Angeles. My name is Michael Bencheck, and I'm a senior living in Port Angeles. On April 2019, I went into respiratory distress here in Port Angeles at OMC. I almost died. Not being able to breathe is scary. It's like suffocating. I spent two and a half weeks in the ICU, two weeks upstairs in the hospital, and two months in a skilled nursing facility. I'm telling you this because if you are a senior, having a compromised immune system or respiratory system and get the coronavirus, something like this could happen to you too. Stay inside and quarantine you and your family. It is better than spending time in the hospital or having to go to a nursing facility. Mayor, please encourage that residents of our city do the right thing by quarantining themselves so as not to pass the virus on to others or get the virus from others. Regards, Michael Bencheck." The second comment was also submitted today. "Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members, I have been following COVID-19 since the first days of the outbreak. I watched it spread through China and eventually begin its stronghold in our very state. I have followed it US-wide, statewide, and most importantly, countywide. I have watched Dr. Unthank's live streams and read articles from our local newspapers. What I haven't read or haven't heard is any comment from our very own mayor or vice mayor. Our local businesses are shutting down, people are losing their jobs all across the country, residents are scared and resorting to hoarding. These are your people. These are the people you are supposed to lead, yet I've heard nothing from our mayor or vice mayor. People are looking for leadership, looking for someone to tell them we are going to get through this, looking for answers. It doesn't take much, Ms. Mayor, and Vice Mayor, to show a little bit of leadership during hard times, a message of solidarity, of unity, of understanding. Address your people, show them you care, show them we are in this together. Lead your community, reassure scared people that we will pull through this, that riots won't break out, and our city won't burn. Stay safe, Kelly and Burbett." And I apologize if I didn't get that right. That ends our public comment period. Thank you to everyone who submitted online. All right, we'll now move on to late items. And before we move too much further, I just wanted to recommend that we make some slight rearrangements to the agenda. I'm going to request that we do L1 of the City Manager Report, that's the COVID-19 update to the beginning of the meeting, because I am sure that a number of people who are participating online are watching particularly for information from the city about that. So if there's no objection, I'd like to do that first. And then I'd also like to move H1 up. That's the resolution in support of Washington State Patrol Crime Lab and Toxicology Lab, since Mark Nichols is here to answer questions for us on that. Does anyone have an issue with that? Okay, great, then let's go to Manager West.
Madam Mayor and Council, I do want to share a number of details about this evening. In particular, I want to share a particular statement that highlights some of those important things that we've been working on over the last few weeks. Specifically, over the last few weeks, it has been the city's priority to ensure that we have the latest and most informed details regarding COVID-19 virus. Our priority has been the health, safety, and welfare of the community, as well as the protection of our city employees. The city is committed to continuing all essential services for our customers. We have a plan for the continuity of operations for our first responders, water utility, electric utility, and wastewater utility. These services will continue to be our top priority moving forward. In addition to our essential services, other non-essential services will continue, though they may be delivered in new and different formats based on recommended social distancing. Beyond these services, the city is engaged in solution-oriented problem solving. We are looking at ways we can support the needs of our local families, maintain adequate housing, and provide support to our local businesses. As of today, there are no positive COVID-19 cases in Colton County. As a result, we have the benefit and the ability to continue to plan for and anticipate the needs of the community. Your employees continue to be hard at work serving the community. The following services remain open at City Hall, our utility customer service counter, as well as our Port Angeles Police Department Records Department, currently permitting, as well as community and economic development services, as well as the City Manager's Office. However, we ask that all customers consider whether in-person service is necessary or essential before traveling to City Hall. Closed to walk-in access right now, we have the Engineering Division and Recreation Division. That does not mean that these divisions are unavailable. It does mean they are available for appointments through email or telephone-related support. In addition, we do have services closed incorporated as the Senior Center, which is closed. It's important relative to the information we have right now to keep the Senior Center closed, as well as we are no longer renting facilities at this point in time. The Parks Operation Division is open and operating normally. Parks has also opened hiring of seasonal employees. Again, I want to emphasize that social distancing is highly encouraged, and we strongly recommend contact with city employees via phone and email wherever possible. The city recognizes the economic challenges that many of our local families face. For that reason, the city has made an administrative decision to make payment arrangements with customers rather than disconnect utilities. Staff is prepared to work directly with those in hardship situations to work out a payment plan, recognizing that that plan may require adjustments if COVID-19 economic circumstances continue to remain. As a reminder, the city of Port Angeles also offers utility discounts for low-income individuals on electric, solid waste, water, wastewater, and stormwater. Earlier today, the city was able to work with Olepin, a local internet provider, to reactivate portions of the city's wireless mesh network to ensure internet access for local students. We are very appreciative of Olepin for being willing to step up during this time of need. At this time, the city continues to be pleased with the partnership demonstrated by Colton County, the Emergency Operations Center, and Health Officer Dr. Allison Unthank. Therefore, the City Emergency Operations Center will not be open at this time. However, city staff and resources will be dedicated to support the county EOC. These challenging times are not taken lightly. However, they have allowed the city to fully appreciate the most essential services that we provide to our community. Simultaneously, they have given us an opportunity to bring additional innovation to the services we provide, innovations that we expect to be lasting improvements for the benefit of our city customers. I ask that members of the public recognize that our circumstances are changing daily with little notice. As a city, we are dedicated to continuing to adapt our plans and response and respond to the needs of the community. Please know that with the goal of achieving the most responsive approach possible from city government, many of these factors may be different tomorrow. So council, we do have a number of other department heads who may be interested in sharing information relative to our response. We could literally spend hours talking about the work and effort that operationally has gone into responding and making sure that we are ultimately serving our customers to the best possible extent. One of the things that I do want to share as part of this report is I want to highlight some of the Attorney General's recommendations, and specifically, I'd like to ask Bill Blor to just walk us through a few slides relative to what the Attorney General has recommended on council meetings. To me, that's an important awareness element that the citizens of Port Angeles should be aware of relative to our approach tonight, as well as future council meetings.
Thank you.
The recommendations that Nathan's referring to specifically relate to open public meetings and how we can comply with the Open Public Meetings Act during these times when there are so many conflicting recommendations from different levels of government about not getting together in rooms and avoiding contact with people. And so in those situations, how do we handle our obligations under the Open Public Meetings Act? And it is a very high priority in the state of Washington that all of the meetings of the governing body be open and fully transparent to the public, and especially in times like this when it appears like we're under an emergency situation with an epidemic going on. It's more important that members of the public can know what you're doing and how you're reacting to this and the policy decision to make. So it's, one of the best things that we can do with the public, I think, is to assure them that the city is continuing to function. We do have a lot of obstacles to overcome. The city's continuing to function, the utilities will continue to work, the police and fire will still be there. Midas Square will still be open to take payments and make payment arrangements, and the other functions that the city will continue. And part of that is knowing that the city council will be doing everything in a very transparent and obvious manner. How do we accomplish that? So the Attorney General had made some recommendations. Is it, oh, okay. All right. So the Attorney General's made some recommendations, and we on staff have taken those recommendations and combined them with guidance from the CDC and also from the declarations issued by Governor Italy, and made us an office of that, and we have some information we want to share with you about procedures for continuing our city council meetings. Okay. And so the first thing from the Attorney General is to recognize that with the COVID-19 virus, about times are not normal. And so the Attorney General has come up with a process for decision-making about city council meetings. Number one, does the agency need to hold? Now, there definitely are certain legislative acts and policy decisions that the city council clearly must decide, and only the city council can make those decisions. But at the same time, there are many decisions that don't require the city council, and that they can be put off. There are many reports that can be put off, presentations that can be put off, proclamations, and informational items that can be put off, or that they can be handled by email or methods. And so the first, the Attorney General asks first, do we need to have a city council meeting? Second, if we do need to have a city council meeting, the Attorney General recommends that we minimize the agenda of the city council meeting. If you have seen that tonight, where some of the items can be postponed until a later date, and so the agenda's actually been minimized tonight. Can you comply with the social distancing recommendations? Now, fortunately, in Port Angeles, we have a large enough council chamber that we usually can find enough space to spread out and still comply with all of the social distancing recommendations that come from the federal state government. And then finally, the Attorney General does point out that we have the option to provide remote means for the public to attend these meetings, and we are in fact doing that in part tonight through the live streaming of this meeting. So that is one method that we have available. We will probably continue to use that. And then there may be additional means available too that can be recommended by our IT department to add more layers to the ability to have remote attendance at city council meetings, and even have the city council members themselves attend remotely. Now, one word of caution on that, I did hear tonight at the sign-in that when people were, it sounded like when people were signing in, that they had to give some kind of identification. And that's not permitted. We'll have them attend to that. We cannot require people to identify themselves in order to attend a city council meeting. So people are, by law, people that attend a city council meeting without identifying who they are, and so we have to use the same techniques with regard to electronic attendance and use. We will take care of that. So the Attorney General did emphasize in his most recent guidelines that the legislative body, the city council, can hold meetings where each member participates by phone or computer. Now, we have in the past, on many occasions, had individual council members participate in a meeting by telephone. We have never yet had a meeting where the entire council is separate, but that is a possibility, and the Attorney General has confirmed that that is a possibility. Now, to do that, there are a couple of requirements. I'll just run over those quickly. One, you still have to have a place that is designated as a meeting place. Most likely, that would be these chambers here, where we are now. That would be the designated meeting place. In the future, it might be that none of you, none of the council members, would be here, but this would be the designated place. There would be a speaker phone here. Members of the public could still come into this room if they wanted to come into a physical place and listen to the entire city council meeting. This would also allow us to record the meeting and preserve the record of it that way. Now, again, if the council were dispersed and you decided to hold a meeting in that fashion, the public still has the ability to attend, the right to attend. They may attend in person in this meeting, or we may be able to create a platform either by telephone or by computer where they could attend electronically. The one requirement is, if we do that, that a speaker is needed at this location who would monitor the meeting to attend, that those public members who are here in person can still hear, so that the actual physical ability of them to hear is still preserved. Now, one other element that becomes a little bit problematic with a public meeting that might involve computer links or everybody being on the telephone is public comment. And the Attorney General, in his guidelines, recommends or acknowledges that that could be a problem, and also reminds that public comment is not required. It's a decision that each council can make, and you can make it at each council meeting, but public comment is not required. And the Attorney General recommends that, or acknowledges that, most councils would like to preserve that in some fashion, and the recommendation is that councils encourage written comments. And it's good to remind the public that the public can always contact the council members in writing. I think from observing some of these meetings over the years, that at least a number of the public think that the only way they can talk to you is come to a council meeting and get up and nervously speak to you. That's not the case, of course, at all, and I think it's well for us to remind the public that the council members are always happy to hear from the public in any mode of communication that is acceptable at the time. So just a recognition that written comments are always... One final and short note. The city council also can hold emergency meetings, and in the case of an emergency meeting, the one thing that is waived is the 24-hour notice. Ordinarily, we have to provide 24 hours advance notice of any meeting, a minimum of 24-hour notice. The legislative body, the city council, can hold an emergency meeting, and what that does is eliminates the 24-hour notice. Everything else is, still applies. There's still open meetings, the public can still attend, they're still reported, all the other rules still apply. Let me backtrack just one minute. I forgot to mention something that is in connection with public comment. Public comment is different than public hearing. On some topics, cities require to have public hearings, and of course, public hearing is much different than a public comment because the whole idea of a public hearing is to get as many people as you can into the room and have them all say something to the council. Now, fortunately, we've been looking ahead on our calendar, and we don't have any public hearings that are mandated until the May-June, Arab Spring time period. And so we do have some time, and the predictions are correct. Perhaps the real difficulty is caused by the coronavirus, we call it that. But I just wanted to make you know, public comment is different than public hearing. If we get to a point where we have to have a public hearing and these precautions are still in place, we will have plenty of time to deal with it like that. So that's a quick, maybe not quick, that's intended to be a quick synopsis of our strategy with the Open Public Meetings Act.
So council, I just want to follow up with a few more comments. I do want to emphasize that tonight, for the first time, we're trying a streaming approach with this meeting, and so for those that are watching on streaming, we just encourage you to continue to refresh to make sure that it's updating. We're making some adjustments as we go. If for any reason you're not able to follow, just know that we will be posting likely tomorrow the full audio recording of the meeting on the city website, as well as I know we have Peninsula Area Public Access here also filming, and I'm sure their video will be available very soon as well. So I just wanted to stress that there's other opportunities to give this information to perhaps share with your neighbors and others to learn more about this meeting this evening. And council, that will summarize my report.
All right. Are there any questions from council? I'm wondering if you want to address this piece. Should we do that now?
So Madam Mayor, my suggestion would be that we add that as a late item.
Okay, very good. In that case, we'll do late items really quickly, and then we can move on to the resolution of support for Washington State Patrol Crime Lab.
So Madam Mayor, tonight, I apologize for the lateness, but we do have a resolution before city council this evening declaring an emergency and ultimately ratifying an emergency reflecting the COVID-19 circumstances on the ground. That resolution is drafted before you, and accompanying that resolution is a declaration that includes the rationale for that emergency.
All right, so let's make that item H3. All right, so let's move on to H1, which is a resolution of support for the Washington State Patrol Crime Lab and Toxicology Lab. That would be funding for those. And Brian, do you want to take this from staff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We have in front of you a resolution that I think very, in a lot of detail, spells out the importance of the five Washington State Patrol crime labs and the important work they do and the challenges that we face right now with the backlog of testing. It's very much like the resolution that our other elected bodies, Forks, Squim, and Clough County, put forward. And the reason that we think this resolution is so important is the, we think it's the best way for the legislature to hear from, you know, local and county elected bodies on the challenges we face right now. And with that said, our elected Clough County prosecutor, Mark Nichols, is here. And he's here specifically in case you have any questions or anything else regarding this resolution that you would like to ask him or perhaps me as well.
All right, so I'll go ahead and read the resolution. And then, in the interest of trying to be proper with Robert's Rules of Order, would entertain a motion and then we can have some discussion about it. It is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, calling for the Washington State Legislature to fully fund the Washington State Patrol Crime Laboratory and Toxicology Laboratory.
I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Right, are there any questions?
So since, I think I know the answer, but since our state kind of just wrapped up its intermediate session, is this really an effort to influence the next session when
Thank you, otherwise it won't get in the record.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember French, Mark Nichols, county prosecuting attorney and coroner, and wearing both hats. This is an issue that's near and dear to my heart. Yes, you're correct. The legislative session just wrapped up. I believe the legislature did include somewhere north of $3.5 million by way of appropriated monies to the Tox Lab. And my hat's off to them for doing just that. I think that was in part based upon feedback from local governments urging the legislature to look more closely at the funding needs at the State Patrol Crime Lab and Tox Lab. To answer your question, yes, this is part of an ongoing effort to keep this as a priority matter in the eyes of the legislature. And the funding that they just appropriated flows towards the Tox Lab. But the Crime Lab Division, with all of the work that it does, as outlined in the resolution, is still suffering from a series of backlogs that are working hardship on the end of law enforcement, prosecutors, coroners, and medical examiners across the state.
Other questions from Council?
I just have kind of a silly question. It's just based on wording. And you are now, therefore let it be resolved, that sentence that says, "The City Council of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, comma, that the Washington State Legislature fully fund." I don't know, it just sounds kind of weird. And I guess I recommend putting in words like "recommended" or "we recommend" to fully fund. I was just asking about why it was worded that way.
I think that's probably a scrims error on our part when we put it together. So is there a recommendation for the best word?
And to, just to partially respond to the comment, the template resolution that I forwarded for the consideration of the City Council is just that. It's a template. It's intended to be modified as appropriate in the eyes of the appropriate or respective legislative body. And so in addition to the City of Squim adopting its own resolution, the City of Forks, in fact, did, they modified the language of their slightly, the county commissioners are in the process of adopting what themselves other Washington counties have. And so each governmental organization does it slightly differently. And so the wording is really at your wisdom.
So I'm going to recommend that we just change it to, that we take out the word "that" and say "call for," which is consistent with the language in the resolution.
To the extent that was an amendment, I second the amendment.
Thank you. All right, so we are, are there any further questions, discussion? All right, then, all those in favor of the resolution as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes unanimously.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much and thank you for coming.
You're welcome. My pleasure. Thank you very much for placing us on your agenda and considering it. I know your time is valuable. And with that, I'm going to exit in the name of social distancing, so have a good rest of your day.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us back to the consent agenda, which I will read. City Council minutes of March 3, 2020, expenditure report from February 22, 2020 to March 6, 2020, in the amount of $1,254,628.98. The Public Safety Advisory Board appointments and electric vehicle charging stations grant.
I just want to make a quick comment. On the number four, the electric vehicle charging stations grant, I'm really happy that we secured that grant. I think it's a great move forward into creating an infrastructure for electric vehicle charging. The only one complaint I had with it, it does not support the rapid charging. But other than that, I'm really happy that we got that grant and we're doing it. So, thank you.
Thank you also, as I forgot to ask if anyone wanted to pull anything.
Yes, please, Mayor. I'd like to pull the Public Safety Advisory Board appointments for separate discussion.
Okay, let's do that. And we can put that in, make that aye for other considerations.
Can I move that we add aye one to the consent agenda? Opnet agreement renewal?
Is there a second?
Moves.
You mean second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, any comment or question about that motion? Moving the, the motion is to move the Opnet agreement renewal to the consent agenda. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes unanimously. So we will move aye one.
And I'll move the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so we will move on to H2, that is the 2019-2020 Strategic Plan amended, amendment resolution.
Madam Mayor and Council, following Council's work session, staff did compile the recommended minor modifications to the 2019-2020 Strategic Plan. Those are highlighted in the form of track changes on page H5 of your council packet. Important to note that what we are asking this evening is for Council to pass a resolution, ultimately adopting the revised strategic plan for 2019-2020. And just as a reminder, we do intend to revisit the strategic plan towards the end of this year, approximately October timeframe. We would have an additional meeting to be looking ahead at strategic planning. Also noted in the memorandum are some lists of items that council members wanted to see discussed in 2021. Those were incorporated in your memorandum. Certainly hopeful that the strategic plan as amended meets Council's desire. And we're asking for Council to pass a resolution this evening if it looks good to you.
I move to adopt the resolution of the City Council amending the strategic plan for the years 2019 and 2020. Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Can you just quickly say which ones got taken off and replaced and what they were? Possible.
So I will, I will do some of that from memory, but predominantly what you see taken off are the items related to Port Angeles Municipal Code. And ultimately, those got added as one larger new item, which is Port Angeles Municipal Code Review and Update. That was added to the very end in its own category of the strategic plan. In addition to that, there was a Communications Plan item that did get removed. And just bear with me and I'll just peek at what, I believe there was at least one other...
Volunteer Coordinator.
Yes.
The volunteer coordinator, thank you very much. Again, there's a complete track changes version that shows those additions and removals. I'll add to, because I know that it's really important to our community and to Council, that under climate resiliency, we did significantly enhance that item to make sure it reflected the latest Council actions, both on November 6 as well as February 18.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Council? All right, all those in favor of the motion, which is, sorry, I gotta find the right piece of paper here. To pass a resolution of the City Council of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, amending the strategic plan for the years 2019-2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And then we have...
Were we going to do E3 after, or, because we pulled it from the consent agenda?
I put it in, oh, I didn't put it anywhere. Let's put that in other considerations as what, because we have I2 and III still on the agenda, would be I4. Is that right?
Yeah, you had it there.
Oh, right, and we, I moved too many things around.
So did I. So did I, to be fair.
Okay, so I4 is Public Safety Advisory Board appointments. And then, before we go on to, let's just finish H3 and then go back to G.
Madam Mayor and Council, if Council's ready, I will move forward presenting the late item. Again, I do apologize, it's a late item. As I mentioned, we are adjusting the city's efforts as we get new information and news. And ultimately, today it became quite apparent that it is appropriate to bring forward to Council a declaration of emergency. So that is what is before you tonight. We are asking for Council to affirm and ratify a declaration of emergency. Ultimately, what that will allow us to do, just to summarize, is the ability to suspend public work bidding and purchasing. That gives us a great deal more flexibility to be nimble relative to contracting, making sure that we are fulfilling community need and doing so in a rapid fashion. I think that item is extremely important. I know that in the declaration, we've listed a whole number of items that this emergency declaration will help with, but I'm going to highlight just a few of them tonight. I think it's important for Council to know it also enables us to take other emergency actions to protect life and property as appropriate. Also enables us to develop and implement creative solutions to provide relief to those impacted by the economic implications and deemed fiscally and legally appropriate. Just a number of benefits to doing that, but certainly most notably is also getting resources from the state and federal government and moving forward to make sure that we are doing everything in our power to support our local community during this difficult time.
Thank you. So I will read the resolution. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, affirming and ratifying the declaration of emergency issued by the city manager on March 17, 2020. I have a motion to approve that.
So moved.
I'll second. Any questions or comments from Council? I'll give you just a minute since it was a late item to look through it.
I'll just say, I think this is an important step. Thanks for preparing it and making the emergency declaration. And we might need to amend it as we go forward, but it's a rapidly changing situation, so that should be expected.
Yes, and I think the other, another value in this is we do have now three weeks before we meet again, and so it's, it potentially eliminates also any need for us to get together on an emergency basis.
I do appreciate the extra manpower that enabling this would do for the city. And I hope that we're able to do everything that is required moving forward.
All right, I will also just say, at this point, I want to reiterate what Manager West said about the, thanks to the county and our particularly Dr. Unthink and Ron Cameron, the undersheriff, who have been the joint command for the EOC. They have been working diligently and we've had city staff at every briefing. I've attended most of them either in person or by phone, and I just really appreciate the work that they're doing and going to those on a daily basis. Certainly, you can follow anything in the news and realize how fast it's moving, but it's interesting to hear really how it's changing rapidly even in Clough County. So, so thanks to them. So any further comments or questions? All right, then, all those in favor of the motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, affirming and ratifying the declaration of emergency issued by the city manager on March 17, 2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, let's go back to G1. That's the 2020 budget amendment number one. And I'm guessing, Serena, you're going to take that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. So there's an issue where you have the first reading of the first amendment to the 2020 budget. As is typical for the first amendment of the year, this really just is capital projects that are carried forward from 2019 to into 2020. There are also some year-end updates that were missed in the budget process that are being put in primarily to transfers. So one side of the transfer maybe didn't make it into budgets, so we're just balancing the cheap backup. And then also, just a note is that because budget amendments include the change in the use of reserves or designation of reserves, as well as oftentimes they're adding new revenue sources or changing those revenue sources, they do require a approval of supermajority of Council. So that's my comment. And again, this is just the first reading. And if available, any questions you have.
Let me read that. An ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, amending the 2020 budget and funds. Is there a motion from Council?
I think we're just continuing.
Oh, yes, we are.
Never mind, sorry. Are there any questions for finance? All right, then we will continue this to the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, then, moving on to, I think, what is now I4, that's the Public Safety Advisory Board appointments. Is there someone from staff who would like to take that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So in front of you have applications for seven existing Public Safety Advisory Board members and one new appointment. And the balance of the board is not up for renewal, and one current board member chose not to reapply. Now, the recommendation from Chief Dubuque and myself is that the current seven board members who have consistently participated, you know, have been very valuable in terms of their feedback and their service to the community. We recommend that those seven people that applied be reappointed. One of those seven, Council just appointed, he was, he applied for a term that was almost expired, so you appointed him about two months ago. So again, we recommend he be reappointed. The eighth person is a school district employee who fills a slot on the Public Safety Advisory Board that is specific to the school district. He replaced, or she replaced a school district employee that was unable to maintain his presence on the board. So the school district put forward one person. We think she's highly suitable, and we also recommend her appointment. We also have two applications for people who would be new to the Public Safety Advisory Board. And there will be a vacancy if the existing member, you know, doesn't apply. But that vacancy is for an attorney. The two applicants are attorneys. The ordinance is very specific as to particular roles. The ordinance is very specific as to particular roles that have to be filled. However, amongst the balance of the board member, I expect there's gonna be turnover. So Chief Dubuque and I plan to bring forward to council the two new applicants with recommendations on their appointment, because I believe one or both of them will be needed to fill vacancies moving forward, and we'll possibly have to recruit for someone to fill the attorney slot if we don't get three applications. So, the short version of this is, at a future council meeting, you should see either two or three applications for members. And myself or Ken Dubuque can answer any questions.
Right. Do we have a motion from council? Supposed to be the way we start discussion.
My motion that we appoint public safety advisory board members that are recommended.
Right. Okay, any questions or... Or do I have a second?
Second.
Right, and now questions or comments? And Lindsay, you can take that first, since you requested it be pulled.
Chief Smith, I just wanna ask about the additional appointments that you anticipate. So some of the people you think we're appointing tonight might resign before the end of their four-year term.
Well, that's possible, but there's also existing members that aren't up for reappointment. One who I believe might choose to withdraw from the board, that's somebody whose appointment isn't up. And that's the, that's the normal state of the board in terms of getting applications. So, we've invested quite a bit of energy and time in the people, the seven that are reapplying. But with the two applicants who haven't really had time to vet out, you know, our normal process would be to have them come forward and talk to the board in person, talk to the chief. And I think you'll have recommendations from us on those two as well, and it would be surprising if we didn't have a vacancy to have to consider sooner than later, as well as maybe even a little bit farther down the road. And if our attorney who's on the board doesn't, she doesn't reapply, which again, if she did reapply, I think you'd have a recommendation for her, to consider her also. We'll have to recruit for that specific person. So, I think I answered your question, if not. You're gonna see these applicants coming forward with recommendations from us sooner than later. I can't predict what people are gonna do, I'm just anticipating the vacancies.
So I asked to pull this item because I think continuity on a board is an important factor in considering your appointments. I also think bringing in new people and new ideas is also important. And so I was concerned that we were reappointing all the existing positions. We had two new applicants who are not getting reappointed. Looking over their applications, they seemed well qualified as well. So, given what Chief Smith has shared today, I don't, I plan to support the motion. I was coming in thinking that I would propose that we refer it to a committee of the council. If somebody else feels that way, I would support that motion as well, and then we'd bring this back in our next meeting. Otherwise, I'm happy supporting the motion as is.
Any other questions or comments? Let's go, Mike, and then Latricia.
How many people are on this board?
So, there's 12 positions, and most of them are specific to like business owner, attorney, school district, medical, so some are specific, some aren't. But I want to emphasize, you know, I've been involved with them for 12 years. Over the last five years, this particular group of people, Chief Dubuque and I have spent a lot of time with the ones that are reapplying, you know, providing, training to them on use of force, Justice Department reconciliation group that we brought up, their new role, investigative team process in Washington, which is significant, getting advice from them on traffic cameras. If you remember going forward, they all did their homework and they provided their recommendations and advice. So, while we believe it's valuable to get new people, it's extremely difficult to get people who will show up to every meeting consistent, like this group of people, and actually apply themselves. We took them through a use of force simulator a couple of years ago, the firearm simulator, which we'd never done before. Chief Dubuque spent a lot of time with them on the committee paramedic program, again, getting their feedback. And so while, you know, sometimes we have boards where people are there, this particular group has been very, very participative, very diligent in taking, you know, what we've asked them to consider. So I think they're well equipped to give you advice, should you ask them for it, on just about anything that you can think about public safety.
I'll just say, it's interesting, having served on the council for two years, this is not a board that we interact with a lot, but it does seem like a board that's very valuable to your department and the Chief Dubuque's department.
Well, absolutely, and like the situation we're facing now, we might have, we actually may need them in a way that we hadn't even thought about for connecting with the community and outreach. And one of the things that we asked them to do, you know, a few years back, to be prepared in a critical incident, like, you know, significant use of force or a major event, to become a conduit for public safety. And of course, the council to communicate with the community of, you know, particular areas that are important to public safety. Everybody that's on the board now has expressed a strong and sincere desire to take on that role.
Thank you, Latricia.
I was just wondering, how come seven positions are up? It seems like you'd wanna stagger those terms so you don't get a mass exodus or having to address so many terms that are expiring. Maybe you have three expire.
So council, I think this is a great opportunity to just put a little placeholder to remember as we are updating the Port Angeles municipal code, to take a look at it. It is far from ideal to have all positions or a majority of positions coming up at once. And I think this is certainly a board where we probably wanna look at making sure we've staggered terms as we update the code.
Excellent. All right, any further comments, questions, or discussion? Lindsay?
I'll just echo Councilmember French, but the opposite way. That when I was campaigning in 2017, I went to a public safety advisory committee meeting, and one of the members said, "We never see council members here." So it's up to us as well to interact with them.
Thank you for the reminder. All right, any last comments, questions? All right, then, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Oh wait, sorry, I was supposed to say it again. Favor of the motion to, not even on the right page, to approve the appointments for the public safety advisory committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, and it is the board, not the committee, sorry. All right, apparently being on camera is not my best, doesn't create my best meetings. So, we will move on to J1, contracts and purchasing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. So, today before you, you've got kind of what we would consider a pretty routine contract. This contract is for kind of a twofold project. One is gonna be for pavement repair over areas that we cold mixed during water and sewer main emergency repair work due to asphalt plant being shut down for the winter. So we cold mix those areas, and we wait until we have enough projects, and it seems economical to lump those in with an annual paving project. But additionally, what you'll see on here is two projects that are in preparation for a chip sealing program that we're really pushing and trying to ramp up in an effort to preserve our asphalt systems. And that's gonna be on Peabody Street from 8th to Albers Rose and Park Avenue from Peabody to Race Street. As we've seen with some projects in the past, it's an effective way in us stretching our dollars. Unfortunately, when we put this out to add, asphalt's really expensive right now, and the projects that we're looking at are difficult projects, because they're not typical widths. And so the contractor can't work as quickly, and what we saw was our price per square foot on the bid went up significantly. The good news is, is that although the prices came back high, we did work with finance to identify revenue streams that could cover those additional costs, but they were significantly higher than what we had anticipated based off of the last time that we performed this type of work. So, at this point, I can definitely answer any questions that you guys have relative to which portions are chip sealed, which portions are the emergency repair work, and then obviously, any questions that you have about the engineer's estimate relative to the bid that we got from Lakeside Industries. So with that, our recommendation would be that City Council approve and authorize the city manager to award the base bid and sign the construction contract with Lakeside Industries, Inc. of Port Angeles, Washington, for the 2020 pavement repair contract, 2020-01, for the bid amount of $359,550.00, including applicable tax, and authorize the city manager to make minor modifications as necessary.
So moved. Second.
Right, any questions, comments? Latricia, go ahead.
My question is, did we get any other bids besides Lakeside?
We did not. We only received one bid, and that's been pretty typical for this area as of late. You know, there's a number of different factors that apply to that. The last recession that we had knocked out some of the other players that were closer to us, but weren't, you know, they weren't over here. And so you really saw those larger construction entities kinda gobble up some of those meetings of smaller size, take their equipment, consolidate. And so I will say that we are actively working with some of our local contractors to make sure that they understand the position that the city is in relative to our access to other contractors, and we wanna make sure that we're getting the most efficient bids that we can. So those are conversations that we're having with their management teams. Additionally, we are going to be really looking at our advertisement procedures and making sure that we are doing everything that we can to get folks to incentivize them to come over here and do work for us.
Okay, other questions?
Yeah, does this lock in the price? If asphalt, say, goes up even more, are we locking in a price here?
So, it's kind of interesting, so Lakeside obviously controls their asphalt stream, so they've got a pretty good idea on what's gonna happen. I can't say 100% that anything ever gets locked in on contracts like this, because you could see dramatic changes in your supply chain for oil, for example. And things can change, so I don't wanna overpromise and underdeliver, but we feel pretty comfortable that we're not gonna see cost overruns. And relative to the actual bid itself, it's not the price of the asphalt that skyrocketed necessarily. In this case, it's the type of work that we're doing. It's non, you know, typically when you pave an entire lane, it's faster for them because of the equipment that we have. We're actually doing more of a surgical approach, because we have areas that have really bad base, and we need to fix that, so that when we chip seal over it, it doesn't fail in five years.
Anyone else have questions? Latricia, go ahead.
I just wondering, is it a firm fixed price or negotiate it? I'll adjourn.
This is all based off of a unit bid? So fixed? Yeah, I'm sorry. Too many after that.
Go ahead, Mike.
So I'll just say, living near 4th Street and N Street, I'm assuming that's the one area that you're talking about that was cold mixed?
Yes.
Because I've had people in my neighborhood asking me questions about this for a little while, and I told them, this is probably what's gonna happen. So I appreciate that, and I'll just say that your request about, talking about the surgical approach, it's a corner where they had to do an emergency repair. I can understand how that's not going to be an easy, cheap repair, just the geography of that region. But I'm excited to see this being done, because a lot of people in that neighborhood have been really irritated with that specific repair and how it's aged, but it's gonna get fixed, so thank you.
Anything else from council? I do just wanna mention, you know, we always wanna be responsible with taxpayer money in terms of our costs, and given where our economy is right now, I'm pleased that this is going to a local contractor to ensure that they can plan ahead for work for their employees locally.
And just lastly, I think the economic conditions that we see on the big picture show that it's hard to gauge markets sometimes, and so, you know, talking about market conditions, when a bid is high, well, it's hard to find the right conditions when it's low too sometimes. And so, you know, the engineer's estimate is a little lower in this instance, but I think that there's reason enough to approve it.
Brendan, you had any questions?
Yeah, no, just, I think out of this whole thing, it's to have a local business, and hopefully, maybe with, you know, the SBA giving out 0% loans, you know, start something here locally that we can rely on if need be.
Thank you, all right. Any last questions or comments? All those in favor of approving and authorizing the city manager to award the base bid, base bid, and sign a construction contract with Lakeside Industries, Inc. of Port Angeles, Washington, for the 2020 pavement repair, construction 2020-01, for the bid amount of $359,550.00, including applicable taxes, and authorize the city manager to make minor modifications as necessary? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, we are on to council reports.
Madam Mayor, if you can just take a quick two-minute break?
Absolutely.
I'd really appreciate it.
We can do that, let's do, let's come back at 7:13.
And can I just ask, so I didn't mention it in late items, but I thought we were gonna be talking about it during the COVID-19 update or the emergency declaration, but were we gonna kind of have a council discussion around our economic response to this crisis? Because I would like to.
Okay, we can certainly, should we do that when we come back and then go into council reports? There's a consensus? Lindsay?
I was just gonna say, let's do council reports first and then have that conversation. I know most of my report is gonna be about that, and so that way we share out, and then we can have a conversation about it.
Okay, that sounds fine. All right, then let's take a five-minute break, because that may be a slightly longer discussion. Right, sorry, that was a little longer than I anticipated. So, let's get started again. Thank you to everyone who is watching online for your patience.
With a wire net?
I think we were live that whole time, so that's fun. All right, so we're gonna move on with council reports, and we'll start to my right, Deputy Mayor Carr.
Well, I was at the Clallum County Board of Health meeting today, and I took a lot of notes. Brendan also attended as a citizen, but so if I forget something, please feel free to chime in. So, one of the things I wanted to mention right off the top is that I know it can be, it's really challenging right now to find accurate information and to know where to go. And the Emergency Operations Center, or EOC, is having daily briefings that we've mentioned earlier in this meeting, but it's online on the Clallum website, clallum.net, and they're livestreamed, and you can just watch them in real time, and they stream at 10:00 AM. I know that my office has been watching them every day at 10:00 and kind of hearing what the new updates are. The governor is also doing the same thing, and so is the president. And so, that's something that we talked about today, and where people are getting information, and how we amplify accurate information, and that the county is really that source for us. And that they are doing a really good job of talking about the challenges that our county is facing, and also highlighting what our response is. So, one of the things that we talked about is that 114 people have been tested so far in Clallum County. 28 tests have been returned, and they're all negative, and there are 86 pending. One of the problems that we're having is because all of our tests have come back negative, we don't qualify for any additional resources. And this is obviously a problem, and obviously very frustrating to our public health officials, city representatives, county representatives, and our citizens, because we are lacking, we don't get access to new masks, we don't get access to new swabs. We're just sort of out waiting. And one of the things that Dr. Unthink was talking about is that there's been some missed messages from the state government and the federal government, and that there's been a lack of transparency and communications, specifically in relation to supplies and testing and how that's going to happen. One of the other things we talked about, as I said, was masks, and how critical it is for our first responders, our healthcare workers, folks really at the front lines, helping our community stay safe, and who are going to be continuing to do that, that the lack of masks is... lack of masks is a huge community problem, and that Dr. Unthank has already put out a call for folks who initially went out and bought up a bunch of masks, that if you have unopened masks and you can't part with them, that you can take them to the county to make sure that our first responders are staying safe when they come and visit you when you're having a crisis. So that's something pretty big. Another one is that we're working, the county is working with Jefferson and Kitsap County to coordinate responses and making sure that Peninsula-wide, we're having, we're having a similar kind of response and also being good neighbors. And on that note, Jefferson did give us some supplies because they have better resources than we do. One of the other things that was mentioned, and I know I'm talking a lot about what's been said in briefings the last few days, so my apologies if you've already heard it, is that folks over, over the weekend, folks from King County and Snohomish County came to Clallum County because we hadn't had the same level of response yet with our restaurants and bars closing, and that our folks came out here to recreate and spend some time outside in our campgrounds, which then became full. So just that while people are staying in place, it's really important to actually stay in place and not go to other counties or other areas, and that we're really practicing that, and hopefully other communities are as well. Also, nonessential dental care was canceled today, which I think is interesting to know. Now moving on to, one of the, one of the big items that we talked about was the county's response to homelessness in relation to COVID-19. So the State Department of Commerce just gave out grant funds, and the amount that they awarded to each county was based on the point in time, the most recent point in time count. So the county is getting a little over $433,000 to specifically go towards COVID, a COVID-19 response plan for our homeless folks. So one of the things that, they haven't written the plan yet. It came out like yesterday or today, so it's very new, but the draft plan is being written by our county commissioners. They're looking at isolation housing for folks who are, who have symptoms in shelters, looking at shelter capacity and how to increase that, and also looking at sanitation needs in shelters and other areas. So they're, one of the things that they're looking at is having a discussion with the port on some of their facilities that may, that will be able to house more people in a responsible way to make sure that folks can stay, can stay a wider distance apart, and that it would also have a facility or an area for folks who are exhibiting symptoms to be sort of quarantined or stay separate from the rest of the shelter population. We also talked about like local food providers, like Salvation Army, Food Not Bombs, other groups in town who are, who, PPH, who provide lunches on a regular basis or breakfasts, food distribution to folks, and that public health has already been working on hand washing and hand sanitizer to help those folks stay safe there as well. We also talked about the need to make sure that there are a wide variety of people who are represented in this funding. So I specifically mentioned our domestic violence shelters and people who might not, families, people who might not be able to stay in the same kind of shelter facility as the general population. And so as we go forward, I think it's just important to keep other marginalized communities in mind who are also in shelters, but just not our surrounding house shelters. And this also would be countywide, so they're working with other shelter providers and other cities as well. We also talked about, there is a business services hotline that's being developed, and the EDC is also working on making services available and getting community resources out as quickly as possible. We also heard from one of the sheriff's officers that 211 is a really great resource to call, and they're a great service agency put on through United Way. If you dial 211 from your phone, you can ask about resources, and they're compiling a list of service providers, places that are open, places where you can get help, including like housing help and medical help, and they're just fabulous. So they're doing some of that work as well. They're looking at Community Resiliency Fund, and also one of the things that Dr. Unthank mentioned as well as it relates to how we put out messaging around COVID-19 is that we have been noticing that there has been Russian trolling around social media in response. So please, when you do share things on social media, make sure that they're at a .gov link. I think that'd probably be the best way to make sure that you're not accidentally sharing misinformation from other governments. So that, that's kind, that's kind of just those things. I think, I'm sure, we've spent the whole, basically the whole time talking about COVID-19, so I'm sure I missed some, but I'm sure Brendan will help out if there's something I forgot, but it was, it was quite a lot.
Thank you. All right. Charlie McGon.
I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Brendan?
I attended the Peninsula Area Public Access Board meeting, which was full of creative ideas and looking towards the future. We've set a work session to develop a strategic plan and try to move that Peninsula Area Public Access in a direction of viability and a better usage for the Peninsula at large. Today also, I went to the Health Board meeting, which was, you know, very full of great information. I also met with some folks on how we could actually potentially be partnership and use Peninsula Area Public Access for a good way to open a line of critical communication between our citizens and our government. I, Allison, I mean, Allison, sorry, Dr. Unthank, Unthank was there, and, you know, we just passed the emergency plan, and, you know, I hope that she, this gives her very broad powers, and I hope that she uses those boldly and when needed. And yeah, that's it for my council report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Lindsay?
I really appreciate Mayor Dexter for attending the EOC stuff and also just re-reading the whole motion before we vote on it. I really appreciate you doing that. And everyone involved in making this livestreamed, like, that's fantastic. I know we should have been doing that a long time ago, but at least something good's come out of this. I look at how the local court is scrambling to find a way for people to drop off papers and file papers because it doesn't do online filing, which of course it should have done years ago as well. And it's a lot easier just filing in federal court, and they didn't have to deal with that. So at least a few good things are happening from this. But of course, there's a lot of bad stuff too. So I was thinking about legislative advocacy, which Association Washington Cities and others recommend we do year-round, and two things that came to mind, I think I wrote this before everything exploded on Friday, but that we should get our state legislators out and looking at housing and shelter needs in the community in order to continue to push for more work on affordable housing and addressing issues for people experiencing homelessness. Then also, I think there's some interest from the legislators on community forestry, and I'd like the city to be involved in some of those conversations as well. All of those kind of pale in light of collateral consequences that people are going to face from COVID-19 response, and we're looking at, in my opinion, a major economic downturn and government responses that don't seem to be adequate for the needs of working families and small businesses. So in that note, there's an MISC webinar that aired yesterday, and it covered emergency powers of government, it covered employment leave, and it covered kind of public meetings, some of the stuff that Attorney at Law mentioned. So that's, I think, a valuable read, especially the employment leave stuff and the resources there for people in the community, either employers trying to get information of their employees or employees trying to figure out what to do. I also attended a call on Sunday evening with about 130 elected officials from across the country talking about how people are responding to this. So there's a number of suggestions that came out of that from some cities that are further along, like Seattle and New York and others that are kind of more in the situation of us where there's no confirmed cases yet. So in the big picture is, we're giving advice that doesn't meet the needs or meet the ability of everyone to follow it. We say stay home if you're sick, but if you don't have a home, where do you go? And, you know, we heard this with our local shelters and, you know, with the situation that we've had before with people experiencing homelessness in our community, and now is a time to fix that because we're only as strong, we're only as healthy as the weakest people among us and the most vulnerable people among us. And if somebody's having trouble outside in the winter or even in the spring, they're not going to be very healthy to start with, let alone when there's a pandemic in the community. So what we do is to center people who are most vulnerable in our community, and as we heard in public comment at the beginning of this meeting, and I think as we're hearing from many residents in our city, we need to take account and take responsibility for dealing with the collateral consequences of this. So I'm really thankful the city's already looking at utility show-off suspensions. That's been something that a number of different groups have suggested. In that light, you know, we do have reserves that we can go into, and so, you know, I'm not too concerned about that one. I know there was a request for us to waive the March payment. At this point, I don't think we're planning that, and I think we're going to take it on a case-by-case basis and see what happens. That's my impression from what Manager West shared, so thank you for that. You know, childcare is going to be a huge issue for people. We already had a group in the community of Prevention Works host a forum on the childcare crisis. There was no available childcare before this hit, and now, you know, with the announcement of closing schools on Friday, we need to figure out solutions for people. And, you know, I think as we hear more from the community, we might want to consider measures to help implement childcare in workplaces, maybe small sites, maybe people who are unemployed working as childcare workers, that sort of thing. So, I mean, there's a lot of restrictions on childcare done properly under an emergency. We have the ability to waive some of those restrictions, so that's something we can consider. Some cities are setting up public handwashing stations. That seems like something we could do in places where people are gathering or in places where there's not access to restrooms or public spaces, especially in downtown with all the businesses shut down, which I talked to the mail person who delivers downtown. You don't want to get your mail forwarded before it gets sent back because she walks into the rooms and stuff. And so, public handwashing stations, I think, is a fairly low-hanging fruit that we could tackle that's going to help people to do, you know, the most effective thing they can do, which is washing less frequently. Meals serving to students, I think that's something a number of people are thinking about, but, you know, recognizing that schools provide more than just education, they provide a space where kids are during the day, and they also provide meals for a lot of kids. That's not one I've been involved in thinking about. I hope others in our community are working on that. Some communities have taken a step of just renting hotel rooms for people who are unsheltered. The cost per person night is pretty high, but it gets somebody in a space pretty fast, and it also would provide revenue for hotels that are otherwise probably mostly empty. Let's see, some places, state of New York has suspended evictions statewide. I think there's a question there, City Seattle has suspended evictions, I think over the weekend, they had a moratorium on evictions. In turn to Michelle Thompson from the Washington Low Income Housing Alliance, and, you know, raising the concern that within our community, there's a lot of landlords who are dependent on the income from rentals, that I'm concerned about the impact on them if they're not getting rental income. And Michelle suggested that a better policy might be to expand rental vouchers so that renters who are not able to make payments otherwise are able to get expanded vouchers in order to make payments, and that minimizes the consequences for landlords going downstream. They might then not be able to pay their mortgage if they weren't getting the rental income. If we don't see that voucher money coming, I think we should consider a moratorium on evictions and also a moratorium on mortgage payments. I'm not quite sure how those mechanisms would work, but as we think about addressing homelessness in this long emergency, we've got a currently unsheltered population, but if that population starts increasing because people are losing their housing, we're just going to be losing that. So keeping people in housing is just as important as finding housing for the people who are homeless, and keeping people in housing is probably going to be much more cost-effective than sheltering people who are currently unsheltered. There's some question about business interruption insurance, and this is not something I'm familiar with, but how we respond and how governments respond can potentially help trigger insurance policies for businesses and assist them in that way. Let's see, there's some places that have minimum pay laws for certain kinds of employees, and that's a question as well as we move forward. Probably bigger than we can implement at this point, but something to know is on the table. Finally, you know, there's the jail and the court system that, you know, if this gets in the jail system particularly, it's not going to be something easy to get rid of. And so, you know, what's our word? There's a city. If we don't have to be arresting somebody, if we can cite and release somebody, I feel like we should be doing that. If there's a reason to not put somebody into the jail, that is something we should pursue. I mean, obviously, that's a decision by the officers, but, you know, it's a decision that we shouldn't take lightly, putting somebody in jail under these pandemic situations. It sounds minor in light of some of the other things, but we also want to start thinking about social isolation issues, especially, I think, for people who aren't as familiar with electronic communication, maybe folks who've never, you know, done a video call with somebody and yet now are not seeing other people's faces as much. And so figuring out how we help to address social isolation, finding the people who need that and supporting them as a community. Ultimately, a lot of this stuff is going to be neighbor-to-neighbor support, and in other, you know, hearing debris from other disaster situations like Hurricane Katrina, for example, a lot of the resources came through friends and family. And the more that people step up for other people in their community and don't look to government to provide things that people can provide to each other, I think the better off we're all going to be in this. So as much as people are able to, you know, watch each other's kids, help prepare a meal for a neighbor who might not have his go-to kitchen or something like that, that's all going to help us in the long run. So I know everybody wants to say, what's the government going to do? But more important than that, I think, is what are all of us going to do, and what are we going to do for each other? You know, big picture, I don't think the government response so far is adequate from the state and federal governments. We don't control our finances very well. I mean, we have reserves, we have $120 million in revenue each year, but that's all allocated, and we're already deferring maintenance on essential services in order to stay within a budget. So where the money comes from for dealing with the collateral consequences of this is unclear to me. Apparently, the day the legislature adjourned on Thursday, they kind of got out of town right before it all went bad, they allocated about $200 million for COVID response. And on Friday, I heard that King County has already spent about $50 million on COVID response. So we're going to burn through $200 million that the state's allocated really fast. The federal Congress is considering this family's first act, which does some things, but I don't think it does enough. For example, gig work- For example, gig workers and self-employed workers, self-employed workers, yeah, get two weeks of family or sick leave, and that's not going to show up until their federal tax returns. So every living paycheck to paycheck is not going to see a benefit there, and two weeks is wellfully inadequate for what we're dealing with. So I don't see the federal government and the state government really stepping up, and that's why it's important that we get a good sense of what's going wrong here, what people are going to face, and then advocate really hard for the resources that we need. So, you know, I support the community economic or economic development corporations. Sorry, I boggled that. I was thinking of the acronym, I boggled the name. They have a survey out on their website now asking businesses to report, you know, what's the impact to you? And it's a pretty short survey. I think that kind of data collection is important for us to do. I think that's it. You know, we need this, with this response, and we need to figure out how we provide it or how the state or federal government is going to provide it. But if they don't, we need to step up and take care of our people.
Thank you, Councilmember French.
Certainly have a lot to say about all that that we'll get to in a minute. As far as my council report, I just was just going to finish what I started last meeting, just kind of reporting on the Logic Tax Advisory Committee. We had a good committee meeting. They've been on the committee for a while. We, as a committee, have to get together and finalize our appointments, recommendations to the council. That's my fault for dropping that, but we'll get to that soon. When we had a committee meeting, we did have most of the discussions around the logic tax policy that will inform how our RFPs for events and non-event funding goes out. One, at least one policy issue will be coming back to the council. I recommend that we adjust our mandatory 25% for capital down to 20 because I feel like we overcorrected just a little because what we had was a 25% plus adding 5% into capital reserves. What that resulted was a really, in a really constrained budgeting process to figure out where all the other money fits. And so this will mean that in a lot of years, we still can have up to 30% going towards capital if we wanted. But if the, if the requests come in different and we find more value in certain events, new events or things like that, we'll have more flexibility as a committee. So that will be coming back to the council at some point. And I think that's all I have for my council report. Most of our other meetings, as you guys all know, are postponed and canceled, and so...
Patricia. The few events that I was going to attend were canceled and postponed. But I do want to take this moment, I want to thank not just our local city of Port Angeles for all of the impacts to the local businesses and the local businesses. The impacts are going to be felt hard by them, and they're complying with the requirements. But I also want to remind that our community, we also have our local tribal communities, both Jamestown and Lower Elwa, which have, the tribes in the state of Washington have stepped out of their norm and complied also with shutting down restaurants, even shutting down casinos to comply with COVID-19. And this is going to be a big hit on our local tribal communities also. A lot of the folks that do live on the reservation, you know, they are also struggling to make ends meet. So we not only have the city of Port Angeles that we need to step up and remember that we need to, as individuals, we need to reach out to everybody and ask, you know, what can I do to help you? Or I'm not working this day, but I can babysit for you. But we also have our tribal community that are feeling the impact too. And unfortunately, they don't have the tax base like the city of Port Angeles does, so they're going to really feel it really hard. Even their childcare shut down till the end of the month also. But I also have heard, just watching the news, that the federal government is coming out with, I think, more of an infrastructure-type stimulus package. Yeah, I know, it's not COVID-19, but I just want to, I know that the city of Port Angeles, usually if you have projects on the shelf, ready to go, those are the projects they're looking for. And I hope that the city of Port Angeles, that we're paying attention to those so that we can pull those projects off the shelf and go after some of those if there is a stimulus infrastructure package that the federal government releases because it really will benefit the city of Port Angeles and our budget. That, that's it.
Thank you. Most of my meetings were also canceled, but I filled them up instead with being at the briefings or listening in. One of the organizations I'm involved with, the board, I'm on the board of FARO, and this is a good example of how challenging, they're an organization that's a good example about how challenging this is going to be. They had to cancel their fundraiser, which is a large source of operating funds for the year, and they're currently closed so that they can make sure that they're complying with the governor's request and because they weren't, they didn't, they didn't want to put people at unnecessary risk. So their board is meeting tomorrow virtually, so I'll participate in that. I wanted to just address a couple of things that were brought up in other council reports, particularly in case people are listening and haven't heard in other ways. The school districts, the school district is now providing, this Port Angeles School District, food at all of the schools. It's a one-day pickup, you get lunch, and then you get your breakfast for the next day. And so that's happening. I've been really impressed with the kind of connections that are being made on social media for childcare. There's a list that's been put together, there are other people volunteering, and of course, there's some considerations around how that works when we're talking about self-isolating and that sort of thing. But hopefully, that will help with some of the burden. Let's see, a couple of other things I wanted to mention. When we're talking about state support, I do, did note that Mike Chapman has been participating in the briefings now too, now that he's back in town, and I think that's going to be really helpful to have someone locally who can, just another person to advocate for our county to get supplies and resources. Let's see, before, as long as we're here, because I'll forget if I don't say it now, I want to mention also that going forward, as was mentioned in the presentation by Bill Blore, there's a likelihood that we may not meet in person in the future, depending on how this goes. And so for people who want to participate, our website is going to be the best place to find out how we are meeting, and it will be the same time and place. But pay attention to the website, and I appreciate all the departments today that got our information out on department Facebook pages. I think that helps get the word out, so hopefully, we can do that again in the future. And I'll end my council report there, and then we can move into, let's do some good news quickly and do city manager report, and then go back to the economic discussion.
So, Council, I don't have a lot of additional information to add under city manager report, but you certainly do have some good news reports in there, including the January, February permitting report, as well as a great job done by the 2019 Community Economic Development Department. What they did and were able to accomplish in a really challenging year is pretty impressive. So that report is in your packet tonight. I do think it's really important to acknowledge the very expedient work that we've seen from our IT division, particularly this week, the ability for them to get streaming video from council chambers rapidly is important, as well as their responsiveness and support of all the operational staff to really meet the needs of responding to COVID-19. It's been really impressive to see that part work. I do want to update council that likely you will see postponement of some of our board and commission meetings. You will also likely see postponement of some of our special council meetings that were anticipated this year. Right now, we are solely focused on operational needs, making sure that we are supporting our community members, supporting the local economy, supporting housing needs. I certainly look forward to the upcoming conversation because it's very important to all of us that we continue to support the community during this difficult time.
Just want to ask if other directors have input or, I mean, other concerns from the operational end are, you know, if we have enough patrol officers out from the fire department, from the police department, that sort of thing? Are we seeing people out sick and having staffing issues?
So I'll start off on that. I think from a staffing perspective, right now, we are in fairly good shape with staff. We do have a number of people out, and like most business organizations right now, we are sending individuals home with symptoms. That has created an additional strain on the workforce in order to be able to accomplish what typically do, as well as what we're trying to do under this event. But ultimately, we're feeling pretty good about the number of individuals we have consistently attending that aren't out sick right now. But definitely, I'd love to have emergency services, particularly Chief Dubuque and Chief Smith speak to that a bit, predominantly for first responders, and certainly if Director Terazozza, Director Hunter, or if Director Breckie and Director Delacott are also still on the line, I'd encourage them to jump in as well.
So I guess I'll start the police department perspective. We've had a remarkably, we have less flu, we have less colds, we have less everything right now. Our record staff, our patrol staff, our PennCom 911 dispatch staff, our detectives are being extremely careful. You know, their PPE and best practices in terms of being safe. We've, you know, we've thought really hard about, we can't afford to lose anybody. We queried all of our staff about anybody with childcare needs, and, you know, with 63 people, we actually found that nobody actually had that challenge, that we've actually, that wasn't a problem we had. You know, moving forward, we're just being really mindful and really careful about circumstances that could make it harder for us to do our job. So, and we're working closely with the fire department. Interesting phenomenon is normally the police go in first and the fire department wait, but this will be the reverse, like we'll stay in and they'll go in with all their protective gear. So, but so far, things are going really well.
I'll just, I'll just add, sorry, I just want to add to that, that we have gotten a comprehensive list back from all city staff, checking in on daycare needs, making sure that families are being taken care of from a citywide perspective. It's not all the same as Brian reported, just in his department. It is a priority for us, making sure that childcare relative to schools being out is being taken care of. But again, want to emphasize, we're looking beyond just city employees, really thinking about the community and how we can help with that issue. Chief Dubuque?
I, excuse my voice, don't really have much to add. From our perspective, I've said this before, even though our awareness is heightened, it's pretty much business as usual. We deal with sick people every day, all day, all year round. We have for years, we always will, it's a huge part of the job. We clearly have a heightened sense of awareness, but for the most part, you know, we treat everybody like it's our own mother or father, or grandmother or grandfather, and we treat them with compassion, we treat them with care. One of the things that's really helping a lot is that Chief Smith was talking about PennCom. PennCom's the first line, someone dies 911, PennCom's been doing a fantastic job with what we call pre-arrival instructions. They've been asking the questions ahead of time so that they can provide information to the responders as they're responding. So we get a call for someone who's not feeling well, you know, PennCom's already asked them, you know, what are your symptoms? Do you have a fever, you know, things like that? So it's given our first responders a heads up while they're on their way. Clearly, that's not the only thing that we pay attention to. We've changed the way that we operate to a certain degree in that we don't send as many people in as we used to, and we're minimizing the number of people who give them patients. But for the most part, business as usual with a heightened sense of awareness. And we're here, we're going to continue to be here, we're just kind of hoping that we don't get, what frequently happens to us is where we get a cold, it'll spread to the department. It just happens. You know what happens? We live close together, we eat together, we sleep, you know, everybody's in the same, we live together like a family. So we kind of hope that that doesn't happen, but other than that, we're there and we're ready to go.
Thank you.
So this is Allison. Obviously, I'm not there tonight because I'm out with cold white symptoms. I just want to applaud my staff for stepping up and covering for me. We are working together with our friends at Public Works Department, especially Engineering, about just coordinating how we are providing customer service. We are trying to encourage the social visiting at our front counter, and that seems to be going well today. We had an unusually high amount of customers coming yesterday, which might have been the normal one-day rush, or it could have been an indicator that people want to get work in and reviewed. I don't know if I should talk about this, I think we're going to have no discussion about this economic effort the city can do because I did participate in a phone call today with the, and I can report on that later.
Thank you, that sounds good. We'll call on you at some point in that discussion.
So I'll be relatively brief, but, you know, the big thing for Public Works right now is we do not have a lot of people who are affected by the childcare situation. It's just kind of a stroke of luck that we don't. I mean, we have a few, but we can mitigate that. Our biggest concern is that we do have some staffing challenges relative to keeping the lights on, which our light operations utility does an absolutely phenomenal job in ensuring that we have reliable service, but we do have a number of individuals who are out sick, and they do have some symptoms that we're monitoring. So that's a real challenge for us that we're going to have to fight through. And then the big thing for us, or two big things for us, is that what we will end up doing is diversifying our workforce. So a good example would be, we have some critical operators for our water treatment plant. We don't want them all working together at the same time. We want to take people from other crews, diversify their schedules, spread that out. We're implementing some nitro blow policies for controls that are touched by multiple people. So just looking at that kind of phase one approach where we're still kind of normating or operating normally for the most part, but really ramping up to phase two just in case. The second thing that we're doing is really looking at supply chain impacts. So ordinarily, we wouldn't order things that we'll need in light operations for winter response until later on in the year. We're putting those orders in right now. Things like stopping up on chemicals for waste water treatment plant and the water treatment plant, we're ordering in bulk because we don't know what supply chain is going to look like in the near future or even in the medium future. So that's where we get to work with our wonderful finance department, who says, yes, you have all the money in the world, go purchase it. And then we stock up, and the good news is, is it's things that we need and it's things that we're going to use, so it's not like it's a wasteful purchase in any way. But additionally, up in engineering, we're changing that vehicle for how people access service with engineering a little bit. We actually think that it will provide some efficiencies that the community will see, and they might actually enjoy some of that more responsive interaction when we have a chance to plan for what we're going to be talking about, which can be a problem when there's a lot of walk-ins. But I will say that in operations, we are essentially reverting back to our core mission. Nothing outside of just delivering essential services and preparing for potential issues as they're cropping up, and that includes engineering. So we, you know, we're working with finance department to help them understand what challenges we're going to have at delivering the CFP as early as they want it. But we really have to make sure that our engineers are available to support operations at a moment's notice because it is going to be a challenge for us to get through this, so.
My dad's an engineer, and so, you know, if you can remove face-to-face interactions with engineers in their area of expertise, you're definitely improving the process.
The planners would agree.
All right, any other department managers want to chime in? Okay, so I guess there are a few ways we could go about this. I guess, Mike, since you brought it up, if you have any specific goals that you're hoping to attain by this, or if it's just sort of a general, let's talk about it so we have an awareness as we move forward. We will have already had the conversation. So when we meet again, we'll have some ideas.
I mean, I just think that-
Maybe we didn't talk until midnight, but we don't want to do that, so.
Yeah, and I mean, I do want to, you know. That's, that's well said. I, I think that, as Lindsay brought up in his council report, there are many different ways that we could approach these economic impacts. We do have a lot of people. This is something that, you know, I'm a small business owner who, I made a decision, you know, in very little time. That's one thing I want people to understand is there's a lot of small business owners out there that had, I mean, we all knew that this crisis was rolling, but we were met on, you know, one night with the governor saying, in a day, you have to close your restaurant, or you have to close this business that interacts with the public. And then we had to make a very quick decision. Do I want to, you know, offer this service or that service instead that is allowable, or do I want to just close? And so those are difficult decisions that have a lot of impacts. I have employees that are laid off right now that thankfully are getting expedited unemployment benefits. But that's, you know, for many of them, not going to cover the needs that they have. We don't know if the federal government will be stepping in to do small, medium, or large-scale intervention specifically, whether they're going to just target industries, whether they're going to be helping individuals and, you know, the people on the ground. I have hoped that, you know, what I've seen, that there might be, you know, federal government intervention, but we don't know. So, you know, there's just a couple of things that I was going to bring up, you know. Obviously, we've talked before about the issues of gift of public funds with regards to utilities. Looking at what MRSC says is they do say that government entities may use public funds to carry about a fundamental purpose of the government. State and local governments are regular, so no matter. When the grant of those benefits is a part of a fundamental purpose of the state, such as protecting the public health, safety, and welfare, no violation occurs. I would have to obviously talk to, we would have to talk to our city attorney about whether that means what we think, what I think it means. But we're in a position where there is a public health emergency. And for the safety and welfare of people, our governor has said you should close your business. When that happens, those businesses likely will still have utility bills. Those businesses, because of how we structure our rates, will have high base rates, even if they're not using any of the power or water. So many of those businesses, I'm lucky enough to be a business that's small in square foot size. And so my overhead is low. I'm, that made it easier for me as a, to make a personal financial decision. Many other businesses are not in that position. And they're seeing what could be months-long changes and saying, I'm not going to make it. And so they're, they're making decisions that might not be in the best interest of the public health. And I can't fault them for that because they also have this constraining, you know, economic impact. So, you know, what should we do is a different question. What do we have the capacity to do is part of that question? But I just wanted to bring up some things that might, we might want to consider in the future. Again, one is the base rates. Having discounted base rates for power, water, or other utilities during the crisis is something that we could consider. We obviously have to have our financial, our finance department talk to us about what that means. Also, knowing that this is a declaration of emergency, there might be opportunities for the city to be reimbursed in some of these areas, if, you know, not fully, but partially. One thing that I'll point out, that I've pointed out before, that's an uncomfortable truth, is we charge every utility customer utility tax. That is a sizable amount of our revenue stream. You know, in 2019, I think we've collected over $300,000 in utility tax monthly that goes directly to the general fund. So obviously, that's a very large impact, but that is under our control. We, as a city council, can change how we collect utility tax. We can lower that utility tax. And that would have a direct impact on every single utility customer. Those are my two big ones. Obviously, there's a lot that Lindsay brought up that I think is worthy of consideration.
Navara, go ahead. I want to just add on to what Mike said. I agree with everything you said. And I'd also just like to highlight the impact of nonprofits as well. I know Kate talked about that. But just as we talk about our small business owners, a lot of nonprofits are also in really similar positions where either people sort of are required, right? Like our shelters, you know, or foster care providers. You know, there are people who have services they have to keep providing. And then there are nonprofits like Faro who are required to shut down. And, you know, then there's offices like mine who are lucky enough to be able to work remotely or not have a lot of interaction with the public. So I just want to highlight that when we're talking about our business community, which is obviously important. There are a lot of nonprofits here too that are really struggling. Especially, a lot of, a lot of folks have had to cancel their events that raise money. And so that's huge operating funds. And that, you know, people, the people who support them are businesses and folks who work at businesses. And that a lot of those folks aren't able to donate anymore. And they're, so anyhow, huge, our community is just hurting. So I want to reiterate that.
And that's a really good, you know, direct analogy that in both cases, revenue stream is drying up. And, you know, for a good reason, to prevent the spread of a pandemic disease. But their expenses aren't necessarily having that same level of reduction.
Yes, so I wanted to add something else. So one of the things I was looking at is our city's official statement on our website, and it hasn't been updated since March 4th. And I know that the city, I mean, I think it's great that there are things going out on department Facebook pages, but not everyone has Facebook. And it's also not the official communication. And so there are a number of cities who are in size comparable to ours that have COVID-19 as either like the header on their website. So you can easily click, they're updating it through that. They're also updating through CORED, which is the city's and county's emergency response. So I would just encourage us to think about our messaging on our website. Specifically, there are links on places like Bainbridge Island, the city of Yakima. I also looked at my hometown of Arquita, Monterey, and California, in addition to, of course, big cities and what their messaging is. Some of them, like Bainbridge Island updates theirs every day. And I personally think that that is not, like, don't have the capacity to do that. But there are things that we could be doing, like for example, having in a COVID-19 section on our website saying, hey, this is actually what, you know, like, we're going to, we're going to keep the lights on, right? You don't have to worry about your, the city is providing electricity. We're going, we're going to do that. Your water isn't going to be shut off. We're not, we're not in that kind of emergency. You still get water to your home, right? Those are things that people are worried about. We are in an emergency, and those are questions that people ask, are asking is, what's, what's happening with our water, right? You know, with the internet, those are utilities that people are really worried about, especially as folks are working more from home. And I think having a list of like, this is, it's going to be okay. Your, your lights are going to be on. Additionally, talking about alternative ways to pay bills if you are in quarantine or self-isolating. I know those are already on our website. But I think really having a clearinghouse to have all of the information in one place is something we're talking about with the municipal code right now. And just really critically important. Any additional city resources or other departments that have a COVID-19 response, right? Like Parks and Rec has closed facility rentals right now. So those kinds of things that people can go to. Additionally, some of the things I think that, as I said, having been kind of a clearinghouse, one of those things is links to the county health information, which is already on our COVID-19 response page. And I would add that maybe that could include the time of the EOC briefings, since it seems like maybe that's something that people might be interested in. Also, links to the school districts' websites and what the school's response is. And then any employer and employee resources. For example, the EDC, the State Department of Labor, Department of Commerce, any of that. And then also, I think, what, having a graphic or something about like what folks should be doing. Again, a lot of this stuff is readily available online or on Facebook. I think everyone's, social media is just inundated with these things. And having an official source from your city government, I think is pretty, pretty critical. Then in relation to homelessness, I also just wanted to amplify what Lindsay said, that, I mean, the reality with tenants is that no one's looking for housing right now. So if someone can't pay their rent, no one else is going to be able to pay that rent either. And that, I mean, the reality is that we need to do something to make sure that folks aren't getting evicted. And I think it's our responsibility to make sure that that doesn't happen and to follow other cities' examples while we're in this crisis. And that when we're thinking about where to allocate resources, the best place to allocate resources isn't in shelters, it's to provide housing. And I think there might be an opportunity here to, to look at vacant buildings or vacant lots and really think about how we can rapidly increase our housing stock to make sure that the folks who are in the most need are going to be the most supported.
Right, who would like to go next?
Yeah, I just want to, sorry. Yeah, I just want to comment to some of the human aspects of this. I know the economic is a human aspect, but my wife's a nurse, and right now, they're battling stuff on the front line. And, you know, they're getting less and less equipment to do so. I also want to talk about the people who are less recognized in this crisis and doing almost just as hard of a job and exposing themselves to just as high a risk. And that's the employees at our local grocery store. They are stocking shelves in aisles that are six feet wide. So, and customers passing by them. I suggested to Dr. Unthink this morning, consider to limit stores only allowing a certain amount of people in at a time, using the parking lot as a queue system to allow those people to get in at a certain amount of time. Also, to shutting down every other lane, aisle, and checkout as well as marking with tape on the floor to the distance of six feet, two meters. I feel like those people, I, you know, I could just name some people by name because I go into the grocery store and they're wearing name tags. And, you know, I know them by first name. I know Larry, I know Andy, I know Ron, you know. They're great people, and a lot of these workers are actually in this high-risk pool. So we have to be aware of that. We really need to ease this curve that they keep talking about. It's, this is, we have, our country hasn't dealt with something like this in 100 years. Yes, maybe we're more capable of dealing with it today if, you know, we check all the right boxes. But we do need bold action, I believe. And I think waiting for orders on high are over. And we need to act locally. And the, the time for accountability will come. But for now, we need to do everything possible to ensure our hospitals stay open and our people are fit. Most hospitals in this country walk a razor-edge every day, short-staffed. And hospitals in our country are built and run this way to ensure their maximum profitability. So, thanks.
Thank you, Brendan. Lindsay or Latricia?
So there's a number of intersecting issues. And I'm trying to think of them in kind of topic areas because I know for me, I, I'm interested in working on the housing stuff, maybe the utility stuff, and the communication stuff. But I don't know that I want to get involved in the food stuff or like the hospital stuff, you know what I mean? In terms of like, where I feel like I can be most useful and also just recognizing how much time I have to put into that. So what I've heard people discuss is our communications, which I think Deputy Merricar has brought up. And it's really important because there is a lot of misinformation going around. Some of that is just bad information, and some of it is dangerous information. You know, scammers can use this and, you know, send out an email that looks friendly, and everyone forwards it to their friends, and they're clicking on linkbait and stuff. So, you know, how we communicate this is something I think is really important. And that sounds like its own area. Our utility policy, I, I think we're on the right track of saying, we're going to address this and make sure that utilities aren't a barrier for people. How we do that is important. And so I don't know if it makes sense for us to have, you know, a subcommittee of the council working with staff on the nuances of that or kind of exactly how we do that. I think waiting between council meetings is too long, given how fast this is proceeding. If I was a brick-and-mortar business owner, I would look at my cash flow and say, well, I can stay in business for the next unknown number of months with no revenue and these fixed expenses and, you know, drain the bank account, or maybe I just leave now. And if I knew right now that my utilities weren't going to be an issue on the output of that, that might change things. So I feel like we do need to work on that. And waiting between council meetings, you know, is not, is going to be too long in my opinion. Housing and shelter, I don't know if those are the same issue or separate issues. They're intersecting issues. But that's an area that we need to decide how to, you know, stop the bleeding, so to speak, that is going to come as people are living paycheck to paycheck in particular, are not able to afford rent or a mortgage. I think there's an employment and income issue. I'm not sure how much we have agency within that. It's, you know, we could, if we wanted to. But it's a question of where, where the funds are going to come from that we're going to provide. Childcare, I mean, it sounds like within city departments, remarkably, is not a serious issue within the larger community. I'm not sure how well people are managing that. So that's another area. And then food, it sounds like school district has stepped up in big ways. I know some of the social service agencies have as well. So I don't know, food is also an issue that we need to be addressing. I'm not sure how well it's getting distributed. You know, these are all these questions. To me at least, there's the communications utility and housing and shelter as areas that I plan to work on, whether informally or formally. But we need to be getting ready for what's going to be coming down the pipe. You know, as, you know, so the model, the theory that why we're doing this is to flatten the curve, as Councilmember Meyer said. And, you know, the doubling rate is projected at 6.2 days. So, you know, if, if I'm infected in 6.2 days, Mike's infected in 6.2 days, four of us are, you know, that's the doubling rate, right? And so that's why it's hitting us like a train that we didn't see coming because you don't see exponential growth coming because it's exponential growth. So we're doing the social distancing to try to slow down that doubling rate. But what that means is it's all going to last longer. We're flattening the curve, but, I mean, unless I'm missing part of the modeling, we're extending the curve out into the future. So this is going to go longer if what we're doing is working. So we need to start planning for this.
Latricia?
Thanks, thanks, Lindsay. That was a great overview of some of the things too that I've heard was communication. One of the things too, I recommend that we look at is past events that caused an economic slowdown. And we all remember when the federal government shut down, and it hit us hard because we have a lot of federal employees that work in the park system and in other agencies surrounding us. So we had something similar, not exactly a pandemic, but it was where families were, again, living paycheck to paycheck, and they were hit hard. So maybe one thing we can do is we can look back to see what the city did, or if there was anything that the city did do at that time that we might be able to incorporate. Or maybe other counties like Clallan County, did they do something around that sound? Or maybe other counties like Clallan County, did they do something around that time that was successful that we can incorporate? I do also, again, I, I think the communication is a key part of our, about on the webpage. I think it's not telling people about what they can't do, but I think more of telling them what they can do and what can be out there. I use Walmart delivery pickup. I've gotten much busier and I, and I gotta tell you, it's easy to be able to order your stuff online, drive up and they put it in your car. You're practicing social distancing using that. There's locally that, what, shop, or dash? DoorDash? I think having things on there to remind people of local things that you can do to, if you are stuck in the house and you can't have things delivered or you can't get to the store, there are things that you can do. But I, I, I think that communication is important, but I think also looking in our history of what we've done in the past. I do agree utilities are a big thing that hit everybody who's impacted by this, not just the small businesses, but by the individual families that are also struggling. But thanks, Lindsay, for your overview and everybody else's overview. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. I have a couple of things I want to add real quickly and then we can go back around, I guess. So I think, one thing, just to, let's see where to start. We, we did have a plan in place for utilities during the federal shutdown and I think that's a good baseline for a starting point of how we handle this. And if it needs to evolve as we move forward, I think that's reasonable. But I think, I can't say for sure, but we've talked about it already a little bit or at least I have asked Nathan about it already. So I think that's, that's a reasonable starting point, the, the plan that we had in place there. So I don't know if we need to take staff time to drill into that or just use that for now. Let's see. I appreciate the comment about grocery workers and I think they also are likely to have childcare issues. I know there are groups that are, as an example, the college, as soon as things started shifting, the college's childcare quickly asked, how many people here need your kids to be here now? Or are you working from home and you can just have your kids be at home? And actually it cleared up a number of spaces and their intention is to use those spaces to support people who are being required to continue working. And so I think the initial idea was first responders, et cetera. And I suggested they may consider spreading that out to, or broadening that to grocery workers and other folks like that. And I'm hoping that those groups are, are communicating some on their own to resolve some of those things because the school district is also required to provide childcare for people who are first responders, healthcare workers, et cetera. I don't know that they have, will have the capacity to provide that for everybody. The other thing I just want to say, as we think about what our response can be, I think one of the things that we can do well is advocate for the city of Port Angeles in the context of the county's response because the money's going to come to the county. That doesn't mean there aren't things we shouldn't do as a city. But I think some of this stuff makes a lot of sense to happen at a county level. And so if we can work with the county and advocate for those things, because one of the things that concerns me, certainly utilities, that's something our, people who live in the city of Port Angeles are going to be feeling. And a lot of the businesses are in the city of Port Angeles, but a lot of the people who we consider a part of our community extend beyond our, our legal boundaries. And so that's not the right way to say that, but. So I think one of the things that I would encourage us to do is really spend some time, and I have been, I spent some time emailing back and forth with Randy this weekend about a meeting that was going to happen and just trying to stay informed about what the county's plans are and making sure that our staff and if maybe we rotate through at this point who goes to the EOC or what have you, so that we can stay informed about what's happening at the county level and, and be supportive of their actions. You know, if PPE becomes available, it needs to go through the county. That doesn't mean we can't be a part of advocating for that. And so thinking about how we might be supportive of county actions for the benefit of our people, I think is also going to be a really key piece in this. So then we can roll back to Mike if we want to roll back around.
So I felt like I should have made a motion at the beginning because as Lindsay pointed out, we kind of devolved into a bunch of different conversations, which I have, you know, nothing that anybody said was bad. Everything's, everybody said really smart things. One of the things that came to my mind while talking about this is, it gives me such great comfort to know that the people that, on this council that are interacting with the Clallan County Health Department have thought, thoughtfully about these things, that, you know, when you brought about the grocery workers, six-foot aisles, like, you know, I've been spending my time thinking about other things. I'm just so happy that you guys are going to these briefings and saying these things. So thank you. What I, the reason I wanted us to have this conversation though is about, you know, when Governor Inslee makes, made this, you know, recommendation, or not really recommendation, you know, announcing a temporary statewide shutdown. It's restaurants, bars, entertainment, recreational facilities, some for-profit, some nonprofit. I just want us to recognize that's a lot of businesses that are closing that have no revenue, that have utility bills. That's a lot of employees that are laid off, that have 40%, you know, if they're getting unemployment benefits, 100% if they've tested positive for coronavirus, which none of our employees have. If we were able to test every single employee in the city limits, we would not have zero cases of coronavirus confirmed. I am almost completely positive of that. But that means they're getting 40% of their wage. If you're talking about, you know, for bars and restaurants, if they depend on tips, that might not be their true wage. They might be, you know, fudging the numbers as far as what they're declaring. And so their benefits are reduced, which that's a risk they took. But these people have utility bills at their homes. We have control here. So pointing to, I think Lindsay made a great point and our mayor made that point as well, that there's three weeks until our next meeting. So my original motion was going to be different, but I, I'm gonna, so I, I moved to direct the city manager to provide legal and reasonable utility bill relief to our utility customers or to provide the city council options at our next city council meeting for that.
We just, he already did that.
Relief in cash. We replied, we did, just to be clear, so I, I made a motion.
Second motion for a round of discussion?
So we said we won't shut off your utilities. And to the point about evictions, we can also say that we're not going to, we're going to put up a moratorium on evictions. All we're doing is creating a sort of Damocles above a bunch of people's heads where their bills are piling up, they have no money to pay them and we've postponed their execution. But eventually, you know, people live paycheck to paycheck. I care about them deeply. Businesses live paycheck to paycheck too. Not, you know, some businesses will be fine, get through this. Like I said, I'm lucky in the fact that I have low overhead. Other businesses don't. They have a lot of square footage. And again, we have created base rates that are not going, that are going to create, I think, the one thing that, just from a political standpoint, this council might get an unpleasant surprise when a bunch of business owners realize how much of their utility bill is base rates. When they turn off pretty much everything, all their lights are off, they're not competing their place, they're closed up and they still have a pretty darn big utility bill. So, you know, we should be providing more relief. We should authorize our city managers to provide that if they, if the city staff has, again, legal and reasonable options that they feel that they should provide that our city budget can handle. Or if they feel like they need city council's input, they should get it at our next meeting. But we have a whole bunch of business owners and employees that are out of work, have either no financial assistance or 40% financial assistance because they're on unemployment benefits. Which, by the way, those unemployment benefits will run out at some point. They're not permanent unless something changes in the law. Again, if you haven't tested positive. So this is something that's under our control. If someone has trouble paying their rent, they have trouble paying the utility bill too. We cannot provide relief for that. We, we probably could provide relief for their rent. We have rental vouchers that we could also do the same thing with, but we can't provide relief on the utility bill. If the city staff recommends that we lower the utility tax temporarily, we should do that. If they decide that it's in their legal power to just provide direct monetary relief to utility customers, we should give them that authorization.
Just, is this something that would be better able to absorb by the county as opposed to the city? They have, they have some pretty broad authority now. And so I'm just curious.
I mean, in my mind, the county should do what they, everything they can do. We run the utilities.
Well, and maybe if this motion passes, a part of it is, it doesn't even necessarily have to be staff. It could be one of us reaching out to the county to find out if there's a mechanism that can flow to us to, to manage that. Can you repeat your motion, please?
I don't know if the city clerk got it, but it was to direct the city manager to provide legal and reasonable utility bill relief to our utility customers.
Legal and reasonable?
Yeah. And that's something that, of course, I'm not a lawyer. I read the MRSC, you know, section allowed in this meeting on what I think that the, the, the issue is that our state constitution provides, prevents gift of public funds, which our state judiciary has, I, in my mind, broadly applied to prevent you from giving cash relief in a lot of cases. But the exception is, that I read is when you're doing a fundamental purpose of the state, such as protecting the public, so the health, safety and welfare, no violation of the gift of public funds occurs. Our state attorney, our city attorney can, I, I'm not going to, you know, say that this is what I'm proposing is legal, but if he said, if he determines that this is, you know, something that we could do, we could be providing just direct utility bill relief, which I think we should.
Okay. All right. So this is just basically enhancing what's already been done in terms of, we've got one thing already in place and can you come back at the next meeting and give us some maybe more significant options?
Yeah, the way I worded my motion was that if the city manager wanted to provide direct relief without the city council's input, we were authorizing it to do so. Or if he wanted to come back at our next city council meeting and provide us options on how we could do that, either through, like I said, temporary lowering of base rates, temporary lowering the utility tax. I'm assuming the utility tax we would need to authorize. We could not just tell him to, that he can, that would be something we'd have to do. But I think that there probably are legal means by which we can just provide direct utility relief to customers during this.
To customers was your word. Yeah, relief to customers. Sorry. Uh, yes, Latricia, you have a question?
Well, I, I guess I just want to make sure that not only is, that he's talking with the finance department too because there's, we have to make sure, one, is it affordable? How does also our declaration, our emergency declaration maybe change our access to some of these state and federal funds that supposedly will be available? And does it change unemployment benefits? If we do claim an emergency declaration, does it change those employment benefits that people can get more back? I don't know. I'm not an expert on unemployment.
Can I just get a point of clarification? Can we define reasonable? I just, I know it, it's just, it's so.
I, I agree. I worded broadly. My intent was to, with the understanding that, like I said, utility tax is $300,000 of our monthly revenue for our general fund. We're not, I, I don't, I'm not authorizing them to cripple, cripple our city budget.
Right. That's also why I asked if we could, if this is something that we can look to the county for.
Yeah. And I, 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 all options should be on the table at this point. I think Latricia made a very good point about, you know, if we do authorize, you know, utility relief, that might be something that we could get reimbursed for from FEMA. In some respect, I'm not sure.
Lindsay and then Navara.
I, I don't understand the reimbursements for emergencies, but at the MRSC presentation, they mentioned that under the National Emergencies Act, there's 75% federal cost share. So that's still 25% to us. I, I think this is different than responding to the federal shutdown and the lack of income from, or deferred income for federal employees and that I don't believe the National Park Service or the Coast Guard or the Board of Patrol are coming to us saying, would you provide utility relief for our government facilities? We were mostly concerned about employees. Here we're talking about a lot of small businesses in town. And so it is more than just looking at residential utilities. We're also talking about commercial. And I think this motion adequately addresses with plenty of weasel words like reasonable, that illegal, that I think it provides some direction which is appropriate at this point in time. This might be direction the city manager was already heading in, but reaffirming that is something positive for us to do. I was thinking about something like deferred utility payments for businesses ordered to close and implement repayment, plan to buffer repayment. But I'm okay with the version that Councilmember French promoted and I think that we should do this. And then start looking at some more of the details of how well things are working for people and what people need going forward.
Navara?
Yeah, I was just going to say something along the lines of Lindsay that I think this is something that we need to do to support our community, especially thinking about, it's getting close to the end of the month. It's two weeks away from the first and that our next city council meeting is going to be after people are already stressing out about, even if they aren't required to pay, I can only imagine how, how stressful that would be to not know if you're going to have the revenue somewhere down the line to be able to pay that back. And I think providing some guidance to our, our local business owners and nonprofits who are, you know, executive directors, administrators who are really thinking about that, I think is, is really critical and I, I'd support your motion, Mike.
This may not be particularly germane, but I think it's a good opportunity to mention because it's a positive thing too about our community. But I've been really impressed with, I feel like I've used the word pivot a lot in the last week because I feel like every time we turn around, there's, we're pivoting, oh, it's going this way. Nope, going that way. I've been really impressed by how many of our local businesses have on very short order reinvented themselves in an effort to maintain their employees' employment and to keep themselves alive. And so I hope that those people who are able to work from home at this point, because we're still in a position of being able to move around fairly freely, that those people who are still gainfully employed with a standard paycheck may consider rearranging their money just a little bit to continue to support those businesses by ordering takeout or, or buying their membership to do their online workouts that they're offering, things like that. So, so I think, I think this is a good idea to, to push a little bit further so that we don't end up with some kind of catastrophe later on. We may anyway, but this seems like a good thing the city itself can do. So I'll support that, but I also wanted to just take the opportunity to mention how impressive it is to watch our community work together and figure out new ways to be in this situation. So bravo to all of them. Lindsay, go ahead.
I was just going to echo that and, you know, people need to know not to suffer in the dark. Speak up if you're looking at your, your business cash flow or your household cash flow and saying, this isn't going to work for a month. Like call the city and say, what about many utility bills? Is there something we can do? We've already said that that's something we're doing regardless of this motion. So people need to know that they can get help and not to, like, let it become a crisis.
Right. Any further thoughts or questions on the motion on the table?
If no one objects, could, does anyone, would we want to bring the city manager into the debate at all? If he had thoughts?
Sure. Nathan, do you want to weigh in?
I can, I can weigh in. I think I really appreciate Councilmember Sharon Warren's comments. Just making sure that the community knows that this is something that we're really focused on, that we're going to have some patience with. To me, that's really important to be communicating to the community. I want to take a great deal of care, recognizing how many rumors we have already seen in this current situation. I do not want the motion on the table to give any false hope at this point or result in rumors that get out to say a customer can do this or can't do that and what the rules actually are. I want to be really clear, those aren't going to be developed tonight. But I am quite comfortable with the motion recognizing. comfortable with the motion, recognizing that staff too believes we need to find some solutions here that ultimately benefit our community, and I'm, and I'm quite confident that, um, that we can find some things to do in their interim, as well as potentially bring some recommendations, uh, back to city council, um, at your next meeting if necessary. So that is something we're more than happy to work on. I think there's probably some other staff suggestions, I know Director Brecky still is hoping to address some of the issues we talked about tonight, but as far as this motion, um, I'm quite comfortable with it.
Great, any last thoughts or comments from council? Alright, then, all those in favor of the motion of, to direct city staff to find legal and, to provide lea-, I'm gonna mess it up. Direct city to find legal and reasonable utility relief to our customers. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Point of order, could we just clarify that that's the motion that the clerk has in the minutes, or if it was...
Yes, please do, 'cause I think I missed a couple words.
So I, my motion that I have is to direct the city manager to provide legal and reasonable utility bill relief to customers, or city council options for doing so.
Good, thank you. Probably close enough for, for procedure. Okay, um, Allison, are you still on the line?
I am here.
Would you like to share with us what you were talking about earlier?
Yes, I'd love to.
Thank you.
So I had an hour and a half phone call, or conference call with, um, the EDC. So, the conversation topic was, um, the EDC stepping up and, um, creating a social media campaign to assist our local businesses. There wasn't, uh, consensus yet on really what that looked like, but definitely what came out of the conversation is the idea to, uh, create something that is a benefit to the entire county. Um, so we're looking at, um, providing support to local businesses, uh, in, in terms of the entire county, all three cities. There was, uh, some comments on just really, um, the concern that the, um, tools that are being pushed out at the state level right now will not be adequate, uh, and, and will be delayed, uh, in terms of, uh, providing coverage or assistance to businesses, um, in our local community, uh, people, or businesses, we need help right now. So there is an effort that is, is ongoing, a small task group, um, was created to really think about what even, um, the, the name of this, um, website or brand could be, um, you know, Cloud Strong, or Choose Local, really just making the effort to not only push out information to the community on, um, helping the community members understand or know what businesses are still open, and what services are provided, and what capacity, but also providing information to local businesses of what they can do. I know I've been having that same thought, but pushing it out at our local level, for the city of Port Angeles. I've had some discussions with, um, Loulish Designs, who is helping our Visit Port Angeles website just maintain, um, a presence on the web. And I've been thinking about shifting that focus of that website to actually address the current issue. So ironically, Visit Port Angeles was created to, you know, have people come here, which we don't necessarily want at this time, but I think there are some ways that we can, um, change the messaging on that site to provide essentially the information our community needs now, emphasizing, or, um, what Mayor Dexter was talking about, just making sure that people are seeing what some of our local businesses are doing, that are, that's pretty innovative. Um, for example, just looking at Moss and seeing how they close their doors, what they're shifting to Instagram for online shopping, and, um, Ozzy Yoga, doing online exercise classes, so I'm trying to think of a way we can get that information out, um, as well as, um, thinking about the recovery efforts. So we have not pushed out any RSD or RSP for marketing services, and the last twenty-four hours, I'm thinking about the need to probably push out an RSP, an RSP that's really talking about recovery, and, um, helping Visit Port Angeles and all of our marketing efforts really, um, help people come back, um, and visit our community. So that's just, uh, that side of what I've been thinking about. I've also been thinking a lot about the speed results from our housing needs assessment, and the recognition that we have a lot of households that are close to homeless. So, um, I, I am expecting us to see, um, a significant, um, challenge there with, with people being, um, being less sheltered or losing current, um, shelter. And, uh, I'm trying to think of ways that we can, uh, partner with the county, and it's really just, um, ongoing efforts with fourteen oh six discussions, but I think we will need to be thinking about some, um, some innovative ways to get housing built quickly.
Thank you, Allison. Those are all good ideas, and I really like the idea of, there's that word again, pivot, um, shifting the way the Visit Port Angeles site, um, talks about our community. So thank you for, for those ideas. Feeling like we should probably wrap up.
Mary, I've been getting opposing comments, just because I, I know there was some good discussion tonight. I just wanna follow up, um, there were a couple points brought up. I, I do want council to be aware that we are in fact tracking costs, and ultimately, in many cases, emergency-related costs will be reimbursable, um, by the federal government, and so that's something that we are tracking today, and to be aware of. Really appreciate the comments on communication, uh, we'll be starting to change that tonight. We will have a press release going out from the city of Port Angeles before staff leaves this evening to talk about some of the conversations we had earlier tonight. In addition to that, we will find some resource to really ramp up communication, making sure we're providing those links on the city website, certainly on our Facebook pages as well. Um, additionally, I do wanna add, I, I think, following up to some of the housing conversations, I know Director Carazosa too has been thinking about, we, we have implemented ultimately Proposition One, as, as well as House Bill fourteen oh six, some of those do create opportunities for ways that we can assist with rents, and I think that's, um, potentially worth, uh, looking at as well, I know that's something that Director Carazosa has been looking at. And, um, it's a conversation that we need to keep going as far as how we can help with the housing issue. Um, I also think it's important to mention that sometimes, as we, um, follow through with things, as Director Brecky mentioned, um, such as an RFQ, sometimes, um, private sector can do a great deal more for our local businesses, and through a contract with them, we can really see some good things happen in support of businesses. So it may be worth thinking about, um, some contracting there, and, um, and all of those items are gonna be continued, uh, items that we continue to explore, um, in upcoming days as well as weeks.
Thank you.
Just point out the irony, I'm sure Director Carazosa's thought of this as well, of Proposition One will start collecting sales tax April first, at which point, sales tax will drop off a cliff as far as collection.
Yeah. One thing I just wanna quickly mention too before we leave, because we have an audience, and I thought this was a really good idea, and we talked about earlier tonight neighbors helping neighbors, um, and there was a special form you could print out, but you could easily just use an index card or rip up a piece of paper, um, is to write your name and your contact information if you are healthy and able-bodied, um, and distribute it to your neighbors. So if they aren't, um, because I think one of the things about this particular situation is, we know that it impacts elderly, and generally, that's a pretty easy demographic to identify, but it's very difficult to identify people who are immune compromised. And so you may think your neighbor is fine, when actually they aren't in their home terrified about going to the store, but you're gonna go to the store anyway, and so, they may have, I think our community is well-connected, but we can't assume that that is true, and so I just really liked that idea. Um, and you don't have to make contact with them, you can just leave the information at their door, um, and give them your contact information. If you think you're sick, please don't do that, but, um, but if you're well and able-bodied, I really liked the idea of reaching out to your neighbors, um, and making sure that they know that you can help them if they need anything, particularly groceries. Alright, um, any last comments for the good of the order? Alright, then we are adjourned, and thank you all.
No, second.
Oh, second commentary, whoops, sorry. Thank you, and we're well ahead of schedule. Okay, um, anyone for a second public commentary?
Thank you for the reminder.
Nah, no problem. Marilyn Smith, I made some notes. One, Mr. Glora said that, you know, having people write in, um, just remember, past city councils were like the black hole of information, you'd write them and you'd never hear even an acknowledgement from any of the seven. So you need to really respond to people, because, um, usually, that's the only reason I came out to start speaking is 'cause I wasn't being heard. So this way, I see that you can hear me, you know, although past council members have ignored me. The, the entire issue of the EDC website is, you know, I use the web a lot, I go to individual websites of the businesses in town, I would really like us to encourage every business to update their website, because that's where I go. I'm not gonna go to some other website, I'm not gonna remember, I'm not gonna go there, it seems like a waste of money. So, think about that, that most people don't, aren't gonna start going, "Oh, was that website I kinda thought about?", they're gonna go, "I'm thinking about Gastropub, let's see what their delivery issues are." Metronet has been, um, from the beginning was plagued by backdoors, and it would instantly download a virus to your machine, or it could've, there were a lot of exposures, that's why no one used it. Have those been fixed? Because that's, um, a real issue for me, just, I saw it, it did come up when I was looking for, um, open, you know, portals, and, um, you know, I think that if we haven't fixed those issues, there's a real problem with having a virus in our community on our, everybody's website, everybody's computers. So that needs to be, the city really needs to talk about it on a website, I think stepping up the website is a great idea, I've always said that. You need to talk about the issues, 'cause everyone remembers how bad Metronet is. So let's, you know, let's cover ourselves with that. The other thing is, um, doesn't Verden Burton have showers? Isn't it a gym, doesn't it have showers? Okay, um, are the downtown bathrooms gonna be open? Or are those getting closed all the time? Because, um, I mean, the Verden Burton would be a very lovely place to shelter some people, or use as a, as a secondary hospital if we have to start keeping people, you know, separate from the rest of the community. You know, how are we using our city facilities, um, if necessary? Because this isn't gonna last just two weeks, you know, this may be with us for a lot longer. I mean, I don't care about body bags, so, we haven't had a worst-case scenario yet, but we should look along that path. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, go ahead, come on down.
Eric Phillips, I'm from Port Angeles, Peninsula Area Public Access, actually, and I didn't wanna cut, fill up a couple of things. Uh, first of all, PAW welcomed on the new board member, Keith Vance, uh, this last session. And we also finalized an actual seat on the board for the city of Port Angeles, its representative currently being Brendan. So the seat, or, the seat is there for the city permanently from now on. Uh, and I do wanna make a comment, Brendan's been a rock star. Uh, the last few days, he's been going to the emergency meetings, uh, he's been putting them out live for everybody. That is also another thing I wanted to update, our last board meeting, we have now ordered the equipment, channel twenty-one, PAW is going online live twenty-four seven. So we are here, uh, we're, we're what's considered a pay station, we are public education and government, okay? We are doing our best to try to get to these meetings, luckily he's been going to them. You know, the board members, they have other jobs, so, up until Brendan started building these for the last couple months, it's been pretty much Peninsula Area B at the station five days a week. So I would like to say that if you, or anybody else you know, or anybody watching on our livestream here wants to volunteer your time to keep the public updated, we will teach you how to do that. Because we're not going anywhere. Uh, all we've done is started moving forward these last few months, and we're continuing to change. We're gonna be out there, even during this, even when we're supposed to be socially distanced, to make sure that you guys are updated, because that's what everybody needs. And, uh, so, we're, we're doing everything we can, um, to make sure we have that equipment, to put people in the field, and the biggest thing we need right now is the volunteers to get there. You know, and if, if you're at home and you don't have a job, or, or whatever it is, and there is a childcare issue, my kids are watching Disney Plus up in the studio while I'm there during the day. We can figure out something to help you guys, if you are here to help the community, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, and thanks for that update about the online, um, component. Alright, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, then we are adjourned. Thank you all very much, thanks for flexing with the new seating arrangement, and we'll keep you posted on what the next meeting will look like.